Okay, I'm going to call tonight's meeting to order. A roll call, please.
Councilmember Murray.
Present.
Councilmember Payne Donovan.
Present.
Councilmember Ryan.
Here.
Councilmember Sonmore.
Here.
Councilmember Woodard.
Akey.
Mayor Protemwall.
Here.
Mayor Matsumoto Wright.
Here.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next is the city manager's report, and Andrew Nidus is remote.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, members of council. Can you hear me okay?
Yes.
Oh, perfect. I do apologize for not being there in person tonight. I'm dealing with some family medical issues, and so I'm joining you remotely. But I am looking forward to being back in City Hall tomorrow and Saturday for the city manager selection process. I do want to update you that the staff of the city has done an exemplary job preparing City Hall and the city for the next two days of meetings and deliberations regarding the five finalists that the council will be certainly meeting with as well as you prepare to make a decision about who's the next city manager. In particular, I really want to thank Stefan and Jennifer, who are with you there, as well as Jennifer's new employee, Lan, and a whole host of other employees who have responded to the call for volunteers to make sure that people will prepare for all the activities tomorrow, including hosting the five finalists, conducting a tour, moving finalists from Room A to Room B as they go through a fairly complex schedule. So the staff really deserves a great deal of gratitude from all of us as we go through the process. As I know you're aware, the day starts off early in the morning with three panels, one of staff members, one of department directors called the ELT or the Executive Leadership Team, and then a third is a community stakeholders panels with representation from the Economic Alliance, Snohomish County, the various boards and commissions of the city. And so we have representation from a diverse group of people representing key stakeholders in the community. The three panels will each spend a half an hour with the five finalists to discuss issues, different issues in different rooms, as they go through discussions that will lead to a facilitator preparing a report, which the council will get on Saturday. So you'll hear the impressions and the outcomes from those meetings. The candidates will also be taken on a tour throughout the city, led by our staff, in a van that will accommodate all five finalists and four staff members together for about a one and a half or two-hour period after the panel meetings. That will be followed soon thereafter by council members meeting one-on-one with each of the candidates to allow each of you to develop some of your own personal impressions, not so much an interview, but more of a meeting. And those will be approximately 20 minutes in length, so we'll keep those moving fairly quickly. Or I stand corrected, I think those may well be 15 minutes. But nonetheless, there will be an opportunity to have some conversation and to get to know the candidates a bit on a one-on-one basis. And of course, there's no script for those meetings. However, I do advise you respectfully that you need to make sure that you don't ask any inappropriate questions about candidates in terms of their family status and other things that are considered private. But to discuss their backgrounds, to discuss what they bring to the city, to discuss what your priorities are, are certainly appropriate topics. And I'm sure the finalists are looking forward to meeting with each of you tomorrow afternoon. That will be followed by a reception or a so-called meet and greet opportunity in City Hall from 6:30 until 8 o'clock, where we've invited the whole community, and so we're expecting a pretty good turnout, so that they, community members, can join the seven of you as you interact in somewhat of a social setting with the five finalists. At the midpoint of that reception, we will be asking each of the finalists to use a microphone and make four or five minutes, a very brief self-introductory statement, so that they can introduce themselves to the community, and we can see how they perform under those circumstances now. And I know that they're looking forward to that opportunity as well. So it's a busy day tomorrow. And then Saturday, of course, is the council's day to have essentially 50 or 55-minute interviews. So we'll have one each hour for the five finalists. You will be doing that in executive session, so that you'll be in the large conference room, the Lake Ballenger Room, which provides an opportunity for candidates to be able to respond to the questions that you have, covering all the key issues that you've identified for the city, but that you've also identified as key factors that you'd like to consider as you begin the deliberation on the selection of your next city manager. So you will have the opportunity late Wednesday, excuse me, late Saturday afternoon to take action, if you're ready to, on making an appointment in terms of the next steps of negotiating a contract with your next city manager. Again, if council is ready to do so on Saturday, the opportunity will be there at the conclusion of the executive session. So all in all, it's a busy next two days. It's an important next two days. And the city, of course, is interviewing these five finalists. The five finalists are also getting to know the city, and in effect, they're also interviewing all of us. But as I said at the outset, I really want to thank a number of staff members, almost, well, almost all the staff members who have jumped in to help with the process, to make sure it goes smoothly for the next two days. So that matter, Mayor, are there questions at all that you have at this point about the next two days?
Does anyone have any questions on the next two days? You do? Oh, you don't?
Great. Well, no, I've talked to a number of you, and we've also talked about questions and other things. So feel free to contact me if you do have questions. One other item I want to mention before I sign off, Assistant City Manager Stefan Clifton, as always the case, has done an exemplary job this week of making sure that we've met Snohomish County's deadline for getting the annexation proposition for the South County Fire, where it needs to be, and taking the next steps on a very, well, on a complicated issue that you've expressed your support for, but takes a lot of homework to make it all happen. So you have, in your Assistant City Manager, someone who has really gone all out to make sure that that's on schedule and on track. So we're very pleased with that. And with that matter, Mayor, I will sign off unless anyone has questions for me at this point.
Does anyone have anything? I guess not. Thank you very much.
Oh, thank you very much, and enjoy your evening.
See you tomorrow. Next is the review of the Planning Commission's 2022 accomplishments and 2023 work plan, and so they're all here. If you don't have enough room, just bring out the chairs. Adam, there's a room there.
Trader? Good look, too. I'll start. Good evening, Kristi Osborne, Community and Economic Development Director. This evening, we have four of our planning commissioners, actually five with Rory, who we still kept his picture in the accomplishments since he did the time last year. Deneen Thompson, Miguel Sandoval, Batista, and Adam Betcher are here this evening. So we're going to go over what the Planning Commission did last year and then present their draft work program for 2023 for you to take a look at as well. I didn't prepare a PowerPoint, but as part of their accomplishments, we'll just kind of scroll through. One of our planners found this, I asked her to find a planning quote, and if you go to planning school, one of the planning heroes is Jane Jacobs, and our quote is, "Cities have the capacity of providing something for everyone only because and only when they are created by everyone." So I thought that was a really cool quote to put with our Planning Commission accomplishments for last year. So we have pictures of our folks that are on the Planning Commission, including Rory, since Rory was on the Planning Commission through the end of 2022. So you can see those folks. We also had three folks stepped down from the Planning Commission. Jim Culver served for a part of the time, Sarah Bennett, who moved out of the area, and Graham Echols, who also moved out of the city as well. So these are your friendly planning commissioners that served twice a month. Some of the accomplishments that happened, just with a few pictures, of course, a lot going on, trying to secure money for work that we do at the city is kind of part of what we do, and also business openings. We were able to have a couple ribbon cuttings last year and have, I believe, three lined up for this year for new businesses. So that's pretty exciting, and we'll participate in those with the chamber. And then, of course, there's been a lot of work that's happened with our park and recreation planning that the Planning Commission was involved with, as well reviewing those plans, and a lot of work that's going to happen as part of trails and amenities in Veterans Park, connecting to our trails for our new Ped Plaza by the Transit Center, and also our pedestrian linkage to the Transit Center. So just to give a brief summary of some of the things the Planning Commission did last year for code amendments, Planning Commission was involved in reviewing the consolidation of the code enforcement provisions that were worked on last year. I'm happy to report that we're working to make our code enforcement process more cohesive with the code enforcement officers in the police department and have a means of trying to get voluntary compliance. But if we can't, then we have the next steps that we can go through to try to clear up some of these properties that have, some of them have been problems for quite a number of years. And so typically, the neighbors aren't really happy, and this has helped us in a couple of cases this year. And we also worked on Chapter 1805 and Chapter 1910, which was our land use process and procedures, which was something that had been in the works for quite some time, also affectionately known as the hearing examiner process, but it also allowed us to tighten up our codes for how we actually process land use permits as well, and trying to consolidate and streamline our permitting process where we can. So I'm still giving adequate review, but also making sure we're not doing a bunch of repetitious and needless steps that can be avoided to get the job done. Undergrounding utilities, of course, you guys saw that, and that was recently adopted. And I had a very happy customer today who had been waiting for that provision to go in on 66th, and we issued that permit today. So that's in action, and that's working as we speak. And then something that I've been hoping and wanting to do for quite some time is the Planning Commission started work on amendments to our engineering standards. So that's going to include all things engineering, streets, sewer, water, stormwater updates, so we can have a more updated and comprehensive standards when we go to do development review and kind of surety in that process and what we're requiring as well, and also in conformance with our comp plans for water and sewer and those type of things. So that's in the works. Planning Commission has started work on that as well. And then some of the comp plan processes and review that were done last year was the Parks and Open Space Master Plan, including the Vets Memorial Park Master Plan that was included. You folks saw that as well and adopted that. The capital improvement plan was briefed with the Planning Commission before it came to you, and also the transportation improvement plan was briefed with the Planning Commission as well. And then we'll talk a little bit more about this on our work plan, but we started discussions on our major comp plan process, which we're doing in 2023 and 2024, and talking about how we can add some subarea and neighborhood planning in that process, which is something, I don't know, the Planning Commission's wanted to do that as long as I've been here and before that. So I'm trying to start to tackle that with our major comp plan update as much as we possibly can, and have identified a couple of areas to do that. And then some of the other things that the Planning Commission does typically is an update from sound transit, which we have one of those coming up as well, and an update from community transit, informing decision-making and long-range planning. And then we do a development activities update to keep the Planning Commission abreast of what's going on with development activities as well. So that's kind of their accomplishments. I guess I would open it up, since I've been talking a lot to city council or to any planning commissioners that want to add anything to that.
If you want to, just go right ahead and talk.
Do you want me to roll into that work program?
Yeah, I think we could just roll into the work program.
So this is the draft work program that the Planning Commission has prepared for this next year. It probably looks a little smaller than in size as to what you've seen before, but I think it's more realistic, and it also captures that a lot of work is going to need to happen on our major comp plan update for, due by December 31st of 2024. The last time the city updated, did a major update of all the elements was back in 2015. A lot of state rules have changed since then, which we need to comply with. Most notably, the big thing is going to be housing, our housing element, and how we identify providing for housing of all economic types. Emergency housing provisions is also a requirement. Council may remember that you gave an additional $75,000 for a housing study. We'll use that to inform our comprehensive planning process as well, in addition to the money that you set aside for the comp plan. And thank you, there was money set aside for not only, hopefully, a robust comp plan update process, but we had a very old environmental document dating back to the 1980s that needed to be updated as part of our comp plan process. So we will be doing that, and with an eye of using that document not only for our comp plan update, but for all the development regulations that are going to need to be updated as part of our process. So the work does not stop if we're making sure that the plan is active as it needs to be in the community, and that we're moving that forward. Some of the other updates that we, everything's high priority, so I don't even know why we put priority on this thing anymore. But the building and fire codes got updated again by the State of Washington, so you'll be seeing those in a couple of months. There's some changes to that that the city needs to adopt. And also, there has been some changes to the State Environmental Policy Act, SEPA, which is our Title 16, that the state did some additional exemptions, raised thresholds of where you don't have to do environmental review. And so we'll need to change our code to reflect that as well and make sure that we're current on that. And then as part of our comp plan amendment, we're going to need to review and update some of our zoning code, Title 19, as part of the comp plan amendment. Much like we did for Town Center, what I would like to do and what we would like to do is, Planning Commission, is to try to adopt those zoning code amendments consistent with our comp plan land use map. So we're in step with that, so there's not lag between what we're implementing for zoning and what we say in our plan. So that will be part and parcel to that comp plan update. And then we're also in the process of doing amendments for our engineering and public works standards right now. And our department is working closely with the new city engineer, Rich Meredith, and also our interim public works director and some of their staff, so in the process of getting that done as well. And then some of the other things that we talked about, just some of the other business, of course, is the development activities report, sound transit comes in, community transit comes in. We have money in the budget for training for planning commissioners, which I'm really excited about. We need to start to catch up with those training opportunities now that we have opportunities, both in person and online, for planning commissioners to participate in. And we're also actively working on all of our electric software permitting as we speak in the background, too. So that's been a pretty heavy lift. We'll get that off the ground and running this year. It's not only kind of re-envisioning all of our permitting process, not only for community and economic development, so building and planning permits, but that involves public works permits, engineering permits, any type of permit that comes through the city, it comes through the front counter for CED. So we're making sure that all of those things are updated and coordinated, and at one time, hopefully, at one point, we will be paperless. And that's the dream here at the city. So we're getting there, and a lot of people are currently working on that in building and planning right now. So pretty close to making that happen. So with that, I'll stop talking. That's kind of what the plans are for this year. And then, like I said, comp plan is going to be as well through the entirety of pretty much 2024 as well in development regulations. So there will be a lot on the plates of the Planning Commission this next couple of years.
Does anyone have any questions of the Planning Commission or anything to add? Councilmember Sonmore?
I'll do it. You probably won't like one of my questions, but first, I want to start by saying it's good to see everybody. I just saw your wife the other day, and we had a lovely conversation. And it's always wonderful that you guys are here. And I was writing down all the things that you have done, and it's quite a list. It's a huge list. The one thing that's, I'll bring up very gingerly again, and Kristi, you kind of already mentioned it, but abatements. Are we looking in that and using the Washington State law to abate some of our properties?
Yeah, we are, actually. So the changes that were worked on and adopted by you folks this past year, in conjunction with the city attorney, outlines a process where we would work to do code enforcement and kind of get stuck, because we didn't have the next steps in our code to see that through. And that has been a lot more successful in taking those things forward when we need to, to actually abate those and get the properties cleaned up. So that's worked a lot better. And then we're also working to get all of the code enforcement records in our new software system as well. So that will be, we'll have interface between all the departments and where we're at. The current system's kind of tied into the other police work, which is more criminal. It's not really lending itself to code enforcement or property. And then there's forms that people actually are filling out by hand and stuff. So just updating that process, making sure where we have overlap and they need assistance from building or planning or some of the other departments, that we're all sharing that information, working together instead of kind of working separately, which has been happening in the past, so.
And I remember you worked on that quite a bit last year or the year before with some different issues.
Yeah.
So if somebody was to ask about the drug house on 236 that has sat there for all those years, and now it's been, I think, purchased by another company, could we go in and abate that? Because it's been an attractive nuisance for all those years.
Yeah. And you know, what might be really helpful is to have code enforcement come and talk about status of some of these properties in an upcoming studies work session by, you know, with council, just to kind of give an update, because we do have several of these properties that we've been trying to work on, some of them since before I got here. So yeah, I think that would be really helpful, so.
For, to put it into, sorry, I just want to make sure, because things are changing, and just so it would be on an upcoming agenda, that we would either have a special session or something at a council to go over?
Yeah, like a work session. If you guys would like to have an update, I think that would be really good. We could talk about that, if you guys would like to do, okay. I think that would be really good. And then we could share where we've had a couple of successes recently, because we have a hammer to where we ask nicely, and then at a certain point, it's like, okay, we're going to stop asking nicely, and it's time to do something about these. So we can share where we're at on that status, so.
That'd be great. And again, thank you, each and one of you. I know sometimes it's hard to get to a meeting because you have other things to do, but thank you for being so good to the city and coming here and doing these meetings, because it is worthwhile. I had another question, but I'll wait to see if anybody else had something else.
Go ahead.
You can answer this one, I think. Could you tell me more about the major comp plan and the subarea neighborhood planning?
Yeah. So every, it was every eight years. It's now every 10 years. We're required to do what's called a major update of our comprehensive plan, and so that's where we go through each element in our comp plan, and we update each and every one of them to go back out to the community, to do And then we could share where we've had a couple of successes recently. Because we have a hammer to where we ask nicely and then at a certain point, it's like, okay, we're going to stop asking nicely and it's time to do something about these. So we can share where we're at on, on that status, so.
That'd be great. And again, thank you each and one of you. I know sometimes it's hard to get to a meeting because you have other things to do, but thank you for being so good to the city and coming here and doing these meetings because it is worthwhile. I had another question, but I'll wait to see if anybody else had something else.
Go ahead.
You can answer this one. I think, could you tell me more about the major comp plan and the sub area neighborhood planning?
So every, it was every eight years, it's now every 10 years. We're required to do what's called a major update of our comprehensive plan. And so that's where we go through each element in our comp plan. And we update each and every one of them to go back out to the community, to do a community visioning process, to take a look at new requirements as far as our population projections and making sure that we can meet housing for future population, transportation needs, environmental needs, the whole list of requirements that we have under the Growth Management Act. And so this is what we're doing here. As part of the previous work programs that you saw, there was always this little thing that says, that said, "Subarea planning" or "Neighborhood planning." And Planning Commission would say, "We really want to do that. We really want to do that," every year. And because of all the other priorities, it never got done. And so what we're doing is we went through an exercise of saying, okay, we're going to look at all the areas of the city in the major comp plan update, but due to resources, meaning staff and money and time, let's pick a couple of priority areas that we could really try to focus on in addition to the overall comp plan update. And so Planning Commission literally took a vote and the two areas that were identified to do a little extra work on was Cascade View and Melody Hill as part of this update. That doesn't mean that the other areas aren't important or that we shouldn't look at them. This is an attempt to kind of step on the gas pedal and get this going as part of the update. So that's kind of what that is. And then we've, we have neighborhoods identified in our comp plan, but there really hasn't been a lot of neighborhood planning, level planning that's been done by the city. And so there's a desire that we are able to start doing a little bit more of that to kind of take a look at the needs of some of the individual neighborhoods a little bit closer versus kind of the overall glossing over those areas, so.
What does that mean, looking at the neighborhood need? There's something, that means there's something wrong with it now?
No, not at all. It just means that, you know, just like in Town Center or in other areas of the city, that they're not, one size doesn't fit, fits all. And sometimes in a neighborhood, we can craft different zoning or different provisions that fit that neighborhood or what that neighborhood wants to see. And so that's just taking a closer look at what those needs are. Does the transportation that serves a neighborhood, does it not have enough adequate parks? Is the land use designation's not really fitting the area and they need to be looked at? So it's not that they're deficient, it's just that there are different areas of the city are unique and sometimes they need just a little bit different things.
And I just want to follow up with one last thing because I want your expertise on all this. With the legislators looking at, lack of better terms, overriding some of our zonings and things like that, are there things that we can do to prepare for that? To say, no, we don't, you know, don't touch this, or you can't do this here, or doing something to help our city be able to control all this hard work that you guys are looking at and being able to plan it a little bit on how, your quote was saying earlier, having all of us be able to plan it instead of being kind of dictated to? Is there like a high level plan that cities are looking at to kind of prepare for something like that?
I, I think it's just commenting on the legislation as it goes through the legislature. When growth management was adopted by the state in 1990, it was really thought of as kind of a bottom up way of planning that there would be some kind of high level requirements, but that local jurisdictions would be in charge of planning for their, for their city or for the county, as it were. And I think as we've moved forward, we're kind of seeing more of a top down approach with some of the more, the desire for things particularly like housing needs and, and those type of things. If, if it's adopted by legislation, then we have to meet, that was minimum requirements as far as legislation, just like anything else. So I mean, the way to get involved is just to be part of that legislative process and comment on that if a community is not in agreement or, you know, if you folks are not in kind of agreement with how that's done. And I would say this legislative session's really going to help shape what we're going to be doing in our comp plan process. So it could impact it significantly and we'll, we'll know more in a couple of months.
That, that could be providing a lot more work to our city. Because when we looked at it a couple of years ago, what they were telling us we had to do is you'd have to shave off part of the house in order to, to do this type of adding a different ADU. I, I can't remember the whole conversation now, but it wasn't very well thought out. And I'm thinking that they're trying to appease a lot of people without putting a lot of thought into our cities and what we're trying to accomplish. But if it, if they continue to push at this, I'm seeing a lot more work that the city's going to have to do, or would that be something?
If, if they adopt legislation requiring certain densities, different provisions for accessory dwelling units and those type of things.
Absolutely.
Then absolutely, then we'll have to address those as we move forward in our comp plan, in our development regulations. So, you know, it's always, there's a lot of legislation that flies around and at the end of the day, we'll see what gets adopted at the end of the day, right? So as of last week, there was a lot of things in play. I haven't looked this week, but I would say we're going to see something out of this legislative session as far as trying to address housing needs. I would think just because they've been at it for the last few sessions of trying to get some things adopted, I think this is going to be the session that we'll see a couple of things come out of that, so.
Yep. Councilmember Payne Donovan?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Christie, good to see you.
Yep, you too.
Good to see you, see my, my old colleagues. First, I want to say kudos to you and, and great work on, I know, something you've been working on since the sort of start of your tenure here, and that's updating our record systems. And I know that that's a, you know, just one success and more to come in terms of modernizing and updating, you know, systems and statute here at the city. So I want to personally thank you for, for doing that. I know that's something that's fallen on you and, and your staff. And I know we're, we'll be in a much better place for that going forward, certainly. You know, I'm, I'm interested in, you know, having been on that side of the table, you know, a month ago or so, in, you know, whether it's your take or commissioners' take on how, you know, with this big, you know, comp plan update, you know, happening over the next couple of years, does it, does it make sense to have sort of more regular check-ins or, you know, more sort of, you know, interaction between commission and council? If, if not, I think we have plenty on our plate, but want, you know, with this really intensive, important, you know, process and decision-making you'll be going through, just wanted to sort of pose that question. And then quickly also pivot to the sort of neighborhood plan and engagement process and also sort of pose a question around, and also just make the comment that, you know, I'd love to see conversation around how, how we're reaching out, how we're doing that equitably. I think, you know, a lot of us in, in the room, maybe not speaking for everyone, but our homeowners, we're getting more and more renters. We've, we have an established rent, renter population, whether you're in a multifamily building or a, or a single family home and sort of understanding sort of, you know, how we're doing engagement equitably. And so, you know, whether, whether there's resources needed for that or, or if it's just encouragement on, on my part, I'd like to express that to you. So I'll leave my questions there. Thank you.
I guess I'll go first and then if anybody wants to chime in, I would say absolutely there needs to be more touch points with the council as we move forward. We can't go a year and a half and then all of a sudden, here you go. And as part of, Jonathan will come up and talk a little bit about our RFP that we put out for our comp plan update. A big part of that is the public participation element. I think that's of critical importance and agreed that just not only homeowners, but renters and all members of the community need to be involved in shaping the next 20 years of Mount Lake Terrace. And so part of what will be proposed is how each, each group of consultants will plan for reaching out and doing participation with our direction as well. And so I think it's critically important for the success of the comp plan. I think we really worked hard on that when we did the Town Center Sub Area Plan, and I don't see us doing any less effort and actually more effort as part of the major comp plan process. That the more voices we have and the more actively people are involved from the beginning, the more successful the plan's going to be. So yes, absolutely. So we'll be coming back to you folks. We're asking for a member of the Planning Commission to be part of the selection committee as well and then be working with you folks to get you involved as we're going through the visioning and the participation and working through the different elements of the comp plan. So we'll be working on that definitely and you'll be seeing that coming for, forward as we're working on it, so.
Anyone else? Madam Mayor Potem?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. And Christie and Planning Commissioners, thank you for a great year of a lot of work and I'm, but I'm more excited about the next two years. This is a tremendous opportunity. I know that my council is already tired of me talking about it. But, but we have a lot of, a lot of opportunity, but also a lot of challenges. And how we're going to address it is going to be important. I'm, I'm really happy that we're starting early and often on this because we're going to need it and the, and the community outreach. We saw during the Town Center process, Sub Area Plan, what active engagement and with the public and bringing them in, how important that is in adopting a successful plan at the end of the day without, with minimal or any opposition. And so that's what we're going to need to do on, and there were, there were concerns going through that process that were raised. I mean, you know, there's always pushback on additional density and additional, you know, everything being crammed into one space and, and how do you make that all work and how do we put it all together and, and high, you know, tall building heights and all of that stuff. But we, we were successful. And now we're going to face another challenge in addressing housing. I mean, this is, you know, look, the reason that we're, we're facing these challenges, these, the state legislation on housing is because there's a crisis out there and we need to address the crisis. And the cities, some cities are doing a better job than others at addressing this crisis, but others, other cities are not. They're just not doing their job. They're not doing their part. And that's why there's tremendous push at the state level to force cities to do something that they don't want to be doing. But then they, a lot of the stuff that they're pushing, we, while we don't like how they're doing it and, and mandating it, at the same time, what they're saying is right. We need more housing. We need to address housing. We need more middle housing. We need to make the process more efficient, more effective, more, you know, we need to do better. And this is our opportunity to do it right here, right now, for the next two years, working on this. I wanted to work through a couple of things, just kind of make sure that we're on, on point on some areas. I know that a lot of things, I mean, I'm very excited about the sub area planning. I think that's a great step. I know we've been talking about that since I was on the Planning Commission.
Yeah.
So we're, we're, I'm thrilled to see us making progress. In fact, I was on the Planning Commission when we first updated the last Melody Hill Sub Area Plan. And, and we knew then that we felt we were falling short. And we had a good plan, but it wasn't a great plan. And it, and it shows because we hasn't, it hasn't gone anywhere. Nothing's happened. And so this is our opportunity to, to really dig into it and create a great neighborhood in Melody Hill and let that place thrive and meet the potential that it, that it has. And same thing with the, with the other, so a lot of opportunities there. But I wanted to touch on, first of all, just wanted to run back, we've got the, it says housing study. I assume that's the Housing Action Plan or the grant. Did we get a grant funding for that from the state also?
We did not. So there was grant funding for missing middle housing and unfortunately, and I would have liked to go for it. Unfortunately, when I had an opportunity to try to do that with staffing this year, basically we would have to have something reviewed by June. I'm hoping that maybe those funds get extended and if they do, then we'll go for more money. Right now, we have $125,000 from Commerce in addition to the money that you guys have set aside. And then you also set a, set aside $75,000 for additional housing. So if those monies, if we have an opportunity for those to go out a little bit further than June to where we could actually do a process, then I would be happy to put that together and try to go after additional funding.
Yeah, that'd be great. And the 125 is the, that was the grant for the comp plan update from the state, correct?
Correct, yeah. And we get those in two, yeah, we get those in two increments of 67, 500 each year for 20, 23 and 2024, which we'll easily spend. And then in addition to that, you've set aside money for the actual comp plan update and for the environmental review on the EIS.
Yeah.
And as part of our proposal, request for proposal, we haven't put all of our money into that request with the idea being that we're going to need to update our development code.
Okay, I was going to ask, because we, we set aside 100,000 for housing in the budget. So, but you're saying that, so 75 of that will go to the study and characteristics and needs, et cetera?
Yeah.
And gap analysis or whatever. And then 25 is being set aside for the actual code update.
And we all, yes, and we also have a little additional dollars that have been, that are in the budget that we'll have for work on making sure that we try to tackle the amendments to the zoning and other things that we need as part of our comp plan process. So hope, we'll try to stretch it as far as we can, both with help from consultants where we need it. There's a lot of transportation stuff that needs updated as well. And then just with staff working on it as well, so.
Right. And speaking of those updates and code changes that are necessary, zoning code changes that are necessary, some of the things I wanted to make sure we are touching on is that we've been talking about for a long time, that we, we implemented but need improvement. Things like the 4800 zone.
Sure.
The transition zone. I mean, this is, again, this is our opportunity. We've got to figure out how to accommodate or plan for and accommodate 3,000 more people in the next, in this small little four square mile city. And we're, and that means 1,500 units, of which, based on House Bill 20, 1220 and the HO5 report and whatever from the Snow Beach County Comp Plan, we've, about half of that is likely to be, needs to be affordable. We need to plan for, when we're planning for all economic segments, the, the area that we, that nobody is doing a good job on is figuring out how are we going to plan for 0 to 30, 30 to 60, 60 to 80, 80, 120, whatever, right? So that's going to be a huge challenge. And then we talk, then that gets back to the public process and why that's going to be so important, because we need to include the public in, in buying into this at the end of the day, just like the Town Center, it was controversial. This is going to be controversial. This is going to be, where are we going to fit emergency housing and shelter and, and low income housing, subsidized housing, things like that? How are we going to make that work here in this city? And we're going to need our, our public's input and help us figure that out and buy in. So at the end of the day, we're all a united community making, you know, celebrating the, the community that we want and, and, and vision for the future. So, so transition 4800, missing middle, how are we, are we going to kind of incorporate that or kind of get some input from the consultants on?
Yeah, so I mean, that's, that's a big, that's going to be a big part of it, right? Missing middle housing, emergency housing, housing affordability. Missing middle housing, emergency housing, housing affordability, density. If you figure that we've done part of our population projections in town center, I figure we have a good 4,000 more folks that we have to accommodate. And like you said, we have a, a small area to do that. So, how do we do that and have existing single family neighborhoods and all of those good things? So, yeah, density is going to be a big thing, our, our zoning that we have in place and provisioned. So, we're going to need to take a look at all of that, starting with our land use map and our comp plan and then in our actual zoning maps, right? So, a lot of work ahead.
Yeah, absolutely. And the other thing, I know we've talked about with the planning commission for years, not only the neighborhood planning, but also kind of the hubs, you know, identifying the hubs around. So, if we're going to fit in 3,000 more people, 1,500 more units, whatever, you know, there, there's the right way to do it, there's right places to do it, and there's other places that are maybe not so right for each community. That's, that's why, that's the benefit of having a city plan for growth rather than the state telling us how to plan for growth, right?
Right.
This is, this is our opportunity to identify those hubs in certain areas around the city that are more, you know, create, have a little more traffic, have a little more business, commercial and, and more housing and more opportunity and more walkable neighborhoods in, outside of town center, around the, around the rest of the city. So, this is a, a perfect opportunity to do that through our comp plan process and, and identifying what kind of zoning changes we need to be able to make that happen. Then the, what about process? How are we, one of the things, you know, we've, as was mentioned, I mean, kudos and thank you for making huge progress on the online permitting and getting, let's see, we're planning on implementing that in, in May, so a couple of months away from having it fully implemented. I know we've been kind of making step by step, a few pieces at a time, but there's a lot of moving pieces, but we're having, we're planning on having it. All the moving pieces working in tandem together by May 23, so a couple of months away. So, great job, thank you. It was a huge lift. Another area that we just, we accomplished last year was the hearing examiner and, and as you mentioned, I was far more than just a hearing examiner. That was just a small piece of, of making the process more efficient and effective and rewriting a lot of things and chapters and code that has kind of been pieced together over the last 20, 30 years and, and some pieces got updated and while others didn't. And so, it's, so that, that was a huge lift and a, a great job and thank you for making that happen. My question is related to next steps on continuing to find improvement. And we're still, we're still hearing about, and maybe it's just part of, in part because we're not fully there yet in implementing the online permitting, but you know, online permitting is going to only go so far too. I mean, that's, that's going to be a very effective useful tool, but there's still people and personnel and policy and code and, and other potentially hurdles that we need to address. And, and so, I'm curious about what are the next steps on, how do we continue to improve? You know, we're still seeing some frustration from, from others, investors in development community as far as lagging timelines and, and whatnot. There's been a lot of reasons for that. Part of it is staffing, part of it is, you know, just a number of different things. I'm just curious what the next steps are for making sure that we are a city that people want to do business in, of people that, you know, we're seeing huge investments in Shoreline and, and Linwood with, you know, can I say crap ton of money? I mean, a lot of investment going into these communities. And, and we're, we're slowly getting there, but, but we've got some, you know, until we get the next few projects off the ground and, and they're able to start bragging about our process and the product they were able to come out of here in Mount Lake Terrace, we're going to continue to struggle to attract that, those investments and the kind of development that we envision for our community. So, what are those next steps on improving our timeline?
I would say, and I don't want to make excuses, and I know of the particular development you're probably talking about, which I talked a little bit about the mayor, which has some complications to it and that's kind of lagging. We have the, the mill stream development, which will be getting approved next week. And then we've also on the cusp of having a complete application for the Rogers Market site for a mixed use, multi-story development there. I think those are the next two big developments. In all honesty, we had one planning staff, a good part of this year, and that was me. And I would say it's very difficult when you have a building official and no building inspector and we haven't been able to hire one for a year and a half and we have no planners. I would say your staff is working their tails off and trying to do everything we can to do, to move the city forward and to make sure that we're meeting benchmarks and thresholds. I would say in the case of the one development group that's a little bit frustrated, that's not just because of the city, there is other entities involved which have kind of, yeah, which have kind of created a situation. But I would say it's not a lack of train on behalf of staff to move this project, to move that project forward and we know how important it is to the city. And in all of these projects, they're, you know, they're part of that catalyst that you talk about where we're, we're starting to get, gain purchase and getting those residential numbers, which feeds to the business community wanting to come in here and establish business. So, I guess on the good front, we have a couple of planners that have been hired this year that I think are terrific. We've backfilled certain positions throughout the department. We're continuing to work to try to do that. It's been tough and it's not only tough for our city, but it's been tough for a lot of cities as far as getting engineers, getting planners, getting building folks. It's incredibly difficult. So, hopefully, if, if we can move that forward, then with the other changes that we've made to try to streamline and with good staff, I think that hopefully we'll be a lot more successful in 2023.
Yeah, that's great. Great, great to hear. Thank you, Christie. I did forget, back to the zoning real quick, I did forget about two other areas that we need to take another deeper look at is additional dwelling units and cottage housing. We've heard from, from others that, in part, the reason that they're not happening in abundant, abundance is because there's challenges in our code and we, and we've heard from, from those that have tried to use it or have used it, some areas we can approve. So, I think that's another opportunity to take advantage of doing, doing a deeper dive on those, those pieces as well as the missing middle, 4800 transition hubs, et cetera, in our zoning and incorporating that into the comp plan update process and final updating, updating those codes. But yes, I'm, oh, and I know you already know about this, but again, reminding everybody about the, the resources that are available to help us through this. And Department of Commerce has a number of resources. Puget Sound Regional Council has the Housing Innovations Program and the housing, the hits, the survey of housing incentive, incentives and tools that we're, we're utilizing, a good opportunity to look around at what others, other communities are doing and what's successful. There's just a lot of, and then the county has a number of resources. There's just a lot of things out there for us to be able to tap into to help us work through these challenges, but it's, it's an exciting time, an exciting opportunity for our community, but some heavy lifting is ahead. So, good luck, God bless. Go forward and conquer.
Councilmember Sonmore, did you have more?
So, sometimes it sounds like we're upset and we understand that we're the ones giving direction and it falls on staff. So, a lot of times when we, you hear our frustration, it's not about staff at all. It's about different needs and different wants and different things. But I think, you know, it's important for council to realize we do have limitations when it comes to staff and, and we do appreciate you, Christie, very, very much.
Thank you.
And it sounds like we're piling it on and piling it on and we're just, we're stating the dream state and, and we understand that there is limitations and we do need more staffing and things like that. So, I hope that we never get you down on this. And I know it can be a little bit much and planning commission, you're hearing all this back at you and it's, it's a little overwhelming and a little daunting. And I, I was listening to myself the other day getting upset about something and it, it just triggered something for me. And it's not the people I'm mad at, it's the situation I get mad at and, or frustrated with. And so, sometimes when we just kind of put it out there and put it out there, I've seen the tolls that's taken to other employees and I just want to make sure that, you know, we do appreciate you and, and we know that you're doing all that you can. And so, I really want you to know that very, very much.
Thanks.
Councilmember Murray?
Thank you, Mayor. Just quickly, I wanted to also just say thank you to each and every one of you for all of the work that you have done. And I think building on what councilmember Sonmore just said, I think one of my hopes with more connectivity, which I think has been kind of an ongoing hope the last couple of years and, and I'm glad that it came up tonight, because I, I do think with more connectivity, the opportunity to raise challenges to us as a council so that we can help address those roadblocks more, in a more time effective way.
Sure.
I think would be a really helpful potential outcome of kind of that increased connectivity. So, when there are, when we are asking you to do all of these things and ultimately you're having to either choose to prioritize and deprioritize things or need more resources to do them, those are the sorts of things that we should be having conversations about as a council because we, we do. We, we appreciate all of the work that you do and know that, that, you know, there are limitations. And so, I'm excited to, to, I think, go and start this process where there is going to be a lot more connectivity because I'm hopeful that, that will help us be able to support you better as we better understand what you're navigating. So, excited about the next couple of years and just again, thank you to each and every one of you for all of the work.
Anyone else? Do you, do you have something to say? Did you, oh, right. Councilmember Ryan.
Thank you, Mayor. Ditto on, thank you for your work. Not only do you put in a lot of time doing meetings, but I know you have a lot of homework to do too. So, I mean, I'm, I'm talking past homework that you've been doing for the last year and more. So, that's greatly appreciated. I just want to put in my two cents on that, so thank you.
Just remember that three of us were on the planning commission. And we've, we've been through the comp plan update and we've been through the town center sub area. We've been through, and we worked on the Melody Hill sub area plan and we, that's one that I think we probably need to look at again really soon. So, I don't know. Is it all, councilmember ordered?
Yeah, I figured I better make sure I jump in, not let my silence presume I don't care. Thank you all for all the work that you've been doing. I'm the can of worms guy, which is to say, as much as this is very detailed, I am sure there's something not on here that at least one of you probably wanted to make it on the work program. Is there anything you want to give us a heads up on that we shouldn't let fall off of our radar, especially if it's not pinging the radar yet?
So, I would, I would say, you know, kind of provide some overview before I, I address your question. You know, planning is a continual process and it's not just a one and you're done type of thing. And as some of the councilmembers have brought up, you know, back in the early 2000s, we did work on the Melody Hill sub plan and we did work on the original town center update. And then I was wholly expecting to work on the next sub area plan and the next sub area plan and the next sub area plan. And I've been waiting for over 15 years and we're, we're finally getting to that. As you can see on our work plan, there isn't the list, like Christie said, the list isn't as long as it normally looks like. Normally, the list is like, like when we started, even before it comes to you guys, it might be two or three pages and it's a lot of small things that add up to a lot of time. In this case, it's a lot of major things with a lot of smaller elements that aren't listed here that are going to require even more time. So, usually, we're looking at one year out. This is, the stuff we're working on here is going to take us through next year as well, having to work on that. I would say the big thing that it, it's, it's like Christie did say, we're not forgetting about it, you know, the other sub area plans, but we prioritized the two that we were going to work on. Melody Hill again, and then, I don't like using the neighborhood name for the, I'll, I'll say the northeast neighborhood.
Cascade View.
Yeah, yeah. Cascade View, little history, that, that neighborhood already exists in Everett. I think, I feel as part, as part of this process, I feel that not only is it working on sub area plans, but it's working on neighborhood branding and neighborhood identity. We want our neighborhoods to be unique and distinctive. And years ago, the staff at that time came up with a couple of names and did like a, a small vote. I, I felt we, we could have done a better job in finding unique names that, that are, that keenly identify the uniqueness of our city. So, I, as part of this process, we will be revisiting that, but it's not just those two. It's the other, we are intending to work on the other sub area plans as well. You know, it comes down to time and money. So, sometimes things have to be deferred and we've been deferring this for over a decade, decade and a half. But these, we, we did, we did have a robust discussion about what we wanted to tackle first. And we, the, the key points that we identified were, again, I almost called you commissioner, I call it councilmember habit. I served with these guys for years. The, these hub areas are, are going to be the ones that are going to absorb more of the growth than other parts of our city. Plus, these hub areas are going to be the ones that are going to be, are going to feel the effects of sound transit more than other parts of our neighborhoods. So, that's how we kind of came through our thought process of let's, let's work, you know, let's work on, you know, sort of a 44th to 12th area and our 66th and 220th area, you know, revisiting that first. But by no means do, are we ignoring the other parts of the city, you know? For my almost 20 years here, I've seen us focus so much on stuff that's close to the freeway where we've, we've pretty much ignored the eastern half of our city. So, this will be the start of that process to, to really be focusing on, on the rest of our city. Because, I mean, there's, there's a laundry list of things that I could go off and say, hey, we want to do this, we want to do this, we want to do this, just things that I've been saying for years. But because the comp plan update is so time intensive and so huge, that was, that has to be the primary focus because we know there's going to be other things that will come up that are out of our control that we will have to address legally, especially depending on what the state mandates. You know, they might make a decision one day and then all of a sudden, that was completely off our radar. Now, we gotta, we've got to accommodate that decision. And then that's going to be, you know, you schedule that, that might be two or three months of sporadic meetings here and there. And, you know, it's also the staff being able to have time to, to do that. And as Christie said, you know, they've been so short staffed that we, we have all these asks, but at the end of the day, those asks fall on them. And so, they have to prioritize what needs to happen to not only satisfy us, but to satisfy you, to satisfy their legal requirements and then, oh yeah, by the way, run, run the city from, from, from day to day. So, it's a long-winded question. There's a lot of things that I would like to see on here, but it's the, this, this major comp plan update, especially since it's been delayed because of COVID. It is going to be our primary focus, at, at least for this year, if, if we can free up time for other stuff, I'm all, I'm all for that. I think I said before, before we were actually get this officially on the books, we're doing this sub area plan, I think I was at my peak of frustration of, over a decade of having this deferred. And I said, I don't care what it takes, if it means that we're doing it ourselves and we're doing more meetings, it's going to happen. So, I'm glad it's not going to come to that and that we actually have some funding to help us do this. But yes, don't, we, we always have more that we want to work on. It's just, it's just, this, this is such a huge priority.
Councilmember Murray?
Thank you, Mayor. A quick follow-up question to that, I guess, for the sub area plans, given that that has been kind of such an ongoing desire that we have not moved the needle on as far as we wanted to and we've identified two to focus on this comprehensive plan, but then we have another 10 years, right, till we go through this process again? I guess, is it merely a matter of funds from a resourcing perspective? I mean, because we have a big conversation ahead of us around ARPA funds, right? And, and I guess I would be curious to hear what it would take, if there would be value to having sub area plans for all of our neighborhoods all now or if it really is like we can only navigate so many sub area plans at one time? And if there would be value, I guess, what resourcing would, would need, what you, resourcing you would need in order to make that happen?
Well, what I would say first is that it isn't that we were just, we just decided to do these two and these two alone. This, this is just, we voted like, what is, what is the?
This is just, we voted, like, what is the priority? What is the number one, one we want to do first? What is the number two? What is the number three? And to be fair, you know, the chair doesn't always get what he wants. The, I felt that the number one, the subarea plan that we should have, that we should tackle first was our subarea plan, you know, the eastern half of the city, which has been completely ignored for decades. But the overall vote was to prioritize Melody Hill. And I'm sitting there thinking, well, Melody Hill already had got a subarea plan. I know, because I did it. So, but because there is so much change that is happening there as well as the east side, and you know, how that affects, you know, Melody Hill has a huge combination of different types of zoning as well. You know, we have our light industrial area, we have single-family home, we have a major arterial that goes through there. We, what I like to think is a pending light rail station will, I want to see that happen. I saw how literally one council member of another city could hold up the entire sound transit process by threatening not to swing their endorsement on the whole project until they got a light rail station. And we had the local, our other jurisdictions here trying to do the same thing. We had Edmonds wanting that station as well. I'm sure Linwood would maybe want it just to help relieve some of the pressure that they're going to have off of their station. Obviously, we wanted it as well. It would have made sense there. Sound transit is very political with, you know, their comments. You know, nothing is ever out of the question, and it still exists on some maps, but we know, you know, political realities and budgetary realities. It did, you know, right now, they're not building it. And that neighborhood is ripe for not only that station, but the type of growth and benefits that we could see as a community. You know, either having that station, you know, it's a chicken and the egg, you know? Can that station bring that growth and development? Or because of what already exists there, can we, I don't want to say force sound transit's hand to reevaluate that decision that they made, or maybe realize, oh, yeah, that, there's a reason why we had this as a tentative on a map. It makes perfect logical sense to do that, and it's a win-win situation for everybody. So that was, at the end of the day, that's obviously the reason why Melody Hill then got the most votes and is number one with a very close second, you know, being our 212th, 44th area. But every, every part of the city was, is on that list, and it's the desire on that list. But to add on to that, there are parts of the city that don't necessarily need as much time to work on those subarea plans. Part of the subarea plans, the, you know, there are very large chunks of our city that are carved out for the subarea plans. And part of this discussion is also going to be, and it plays into the sort of the neighborhood identity as well, is that the subarea plans, and this is for all cities, it's an administrative tool, but is that really, you know, does it really make sense that gateway is the entire southern border of our city? You know, there's the gateway by the freeway, which is completely different than gateway by 44th. Does it make sense that those are even considered the same neighborhood? Would it make sense to carve that out, give each of those areas its more unique identity? One where, you know, where it makes sense, where it's closer to the light rail stations, closer to the freeway, yeah, that's where you're going to focus more of the density versus areas where, you know, it's primarily not only single-family home, but you have other considerations like geography, topography, hydrology, you know, things that, it's like, oh, yeah, well, you just, physically, you're not going to be able to put the kind of things that you're going to be able to put closer to the freeway. So that's going to be part of the process. And so you have to, you have to examine everything. It's just, we had to pick where we wanted to start. Where was our first step? So it was those two. To be honest, I think in the last meeting, I even brought up, where are the other ones? And it's like, okay, we're still doing them. It's just, those are the two, and these are the ones that are going to be the bigger lifts, and they're going to make more time, take more time. So the goal is to have that all done for this comp plan, but, you know, staff time, money, the fact that we have a calendar every day, you know, every day we're getting closer to when this has to be done. So the goal is to work on that, but we have to be also realistic about what can we accomplish in this very short window that we have. That doesn't mean that we're going to wait until the entire next comp plan cycle. That just means, oh, it didn't get on this one for 2024, but every year, we can do an update to the comp plan. And so I fully expect us to, for, you know, this is by 2024, I expect us to have at least two more, or maybe three more subarea plans on that 2025 cycle as well. So they're there, and they're going to happen very soon. I'm not going to allow it to be pushed off for another decade or two, so.
Well, we appreciate your diligence, and I absolutely understood that, kind of that those were the priorities, just, you know, because you have to start somewhere and prioritize things. I guess, just to follow up on that, and that was actually very helpful as somebody who's not been through this process before, I guess, is it helpful to prioritize, like, to be able to have more resources to prioritize those other ones at this point in time, given that we're not going to have ARPA funds indefinitely and won't have those funds kind of by the time we get through this process and are looking at future potential subarea plans?
Of course, I'd say yes. That's kind of a no-brainer. I would say the hope is, is that we are able to, Nick's saying three, because he's going for it. I would say, you know, maybe doing two at a time, but like Nick said, not to be waiting for, oh, 10 years down the road, we have another opportunity. It's something that we need to keep at in order to do, to put that on our plate every year, and it's going to take resources. That's staffing and money, because there's a lot of technical work that goes behind a subarea plan that we need help with, particularly if we're going to do the environmental work that we need so we can streamline permitting and processes and be able to do planned actions like we did in Town Center, et cetera, where we're front-loading the permitting process, if you will, and we're addressing things at the beginning, not at the end. So my hope would be that, yes, 2025, we've identified a couple of areas that we want to plan for. 2026, we've identified a couple of areas, you know, and we just keep that going. And then when we get up to our next major update, then, you know, the lift is not so ginormous, or you haven't had areas of the community that you really haven't paid attention to in a very, very long time. And this community is a different community now than it was 10 years ago, and it's going to be very different in 10 years from now. So we need to be planning, we need to be ahead of planning for things, or, as we've talked about this evening, somebody else is going to do that planning for us.
Thank you. Thank you. Anyone else? Okay. I think we've all, did you have something more to say?
Yeah, I was just going to allow the opportunity for my fellow planning commissioners, you know, if they want to say a few words, they can, you know. I just wanted to give them that chance of, see if, usually, they're pretty shy, but, you know, sometimes they, you know. It's great, you know, this provides a form, you know, to, for them to, you know, hear your guys' point of view and your feedback, because, you know, we're partners in this, and we don't always agree necessarily on the final decisions that are made, but, you know, at the end of the day, you know, we're here to better the city and move it forward. So, did you want to say anything? Sorry, my back was to you, so I'll let you talk.
Yeah, sorry, I tend to talk too much anyways, so I apologize for doing that here. I'm really glad to hear everyone is, you know, understanding our work and very interested in it, and also supportive. And I'm also glad to hear that there's a lot of interest in communicating a lot more going forward. I think, you know, for, we do comp plan updates regularly, and since I joined the Planning Commission maybe, you know, several months ago, I'm getting the sense that this one is like sort of where the rubber meets the road in terms of like light rail opening and all the changes that are going to happen. There are a lot of opportunities to sort of bring the community together in this, and I think the more coordinated we are and the better that we're able to get things right now, it's going to pay dividends over the next several decades. And so I'm really glad that everyone is, you know, supportive of this. I think anything we can do to help support staff in terms of getting them what they need so that we get this right is going to be really important at this juncture. So I'm glad to hear that, and I look forward to working with you all.
Thank you. Anyone else? Really? All right, well, thank you very much. So next on our agenda is the review of the, is that the review of the Planning Commission major comprehensive plan process?
Good evening, everyone. Mayor Matsumoto Wright, Mayor Fortem Wall, members of the council. I'm Jonathan Morales, Associate Planner. It's hard to follow a robust conversation on the comp plan, so I'll try not to be too repetitive. So let me share my screen. So the purpose of today's presentation is to provide an overview of the periodic comprehensive plan update process for the 2024 to 2044 20-year cycle. Much of, a lot have been alluded to already, so I'll try to be brief. So comprehensive plans are mandated by the Growth Management Act for fully-planning jurisdictions and partially-planning jurisdictions. The periodic updates are required every 10 years. Formally, they're required every eight years. City Mount Lake Terrace is in a county that is a fully-planning county, so we're required to submit a periodic update by December 31st, 2024. So the Growth Management Act requires review of comprehensive plan and development regulations to bring them up to date with any relevant changes in the Growth Management Act, recent case law, and to respond to changes in land use and population growth. So as shown on this visual here, local comprehensive plans are informed by the Growth Management Act in addition to Division 2050, which is Pugilist Regional Council's regional planning framework and multi-county planning policies. And that's in the Homish Counties' county-wide planning policies. And so Snohomish County county-wide planning policies provides growth targets. So these are set by the Office of Financial Management. And then Snohomish County integrates this into the county-wide planning policies, and this aggregates them to local jurisdictions. So for 2044, City Mount Lake Terrace has a growth target of 34,710 persons. So this is an additional 13,000 persons to plan for through this process. We also have an employment target of 11,148 new jobs by 2044. Regarding housing, this is something that we are waiting for the Department of Commerce to finish up their work related to the House Bill 1220, which I'll go into in a bit. There's also a requirement to provide adequate provisions for housing units in conjunction with the population growth. I just wanted to compare, so the 2015 comp plan, which was planning for 2035, had a growth target of 24,767 by 2035, and capacity, current land capacity of 24,955. So between 2015 update and the current update that we're about to start, that's an additional So one of the major focuses, as we discussed, of the major comprehensive plan update is related to housing, so updating our housing element. We are going to update all elements as required by the Growth Management Act, but the major lift will be to integrate a lot of the requirements coming out of the House Bill 1220. So this is straight out of the legislative text here. So HB 1220 is requiring jurisdictions to plan for and accommodate emergency, in parentheses, this is shelter, temporary housing, affordable housing for all income levels. Document existing and projected housing needs include a statement of goals, policies, objectives, and mandatory provisions for moderate-density housing options within an urban-growth area. Identify sufficient capacity of land for all housing needs, emergency housing and emergency shelters, in addition to permanent supportive housing. Make adequate provisions for existing and projected housing needs of all income brackets. So this is between 0% and 30%, and 60% of the area median income, 80%, 120% of the area median income, including documenting barriers and actions needed to achieve housing Another one is identify local policies and regulations that result in racially disparate impacts, displacement and exclusion in housing, and identify and implement policies and regulations to begin to address and undo such impacts. And finally, identify areas that may be at higher risk of displacement and establish anti-displacement policies. So a lot of this will be integrated into updating our housing element. So the Department of Commerce has been leading this work, especially around the projected housing needs and racially disparate impacts. They provided guidance on methodologies to go about integrating this into our analysis. So we hope to work with the consultant to deliver on this, and so we're looking forward to that. Wanted to go briefly over the periodic update process. This is not an exhaustive list of what will be required, but one of the first items will be a work program and schedule. So this is actually something that we're requiring consultants and firms to include as part of their RFP submittal. Once the consultant is selected, we'll work with them to develop a public participation plan. So this is a roadmap for how community engagement will be integrated into this update process, different activities, communication tools. And then visioning process is a major one, that's why it's isolated there. That'll be one of the first engagement activities we anticipate. So this will be where we can go over the community vision. We do have a community vision in the community livability elements, so trying to figure out if that's, if there's an update needed for that. It was mentioned about neighborhood branding, that could be something that we can include in this visioning process. So we're looking forward to seeing what sort of activities and engagement actions we can take throughout this process. As shown below, ongoing community engagement and public meetings. We do want to make sure that we're doing a robust community engagement process and really getting out to the community and including them throughout this process. After visioning, another major item is to review and update comp plan elements and update development regulations. So a major deliverable will be the Commerce Periodic Update Checklist, which is required for the Commerce Grant that we received. So this is also a way to help us figure out what will need to be updated as mandated by the Growth Management Act and other legislative requirements. Subarea planning is another major item here, as we discussed, Melody Hill. So Melody Hill subarea was last adopted in 2006, so there'll be a lot of new items to include. We also want to develop a subarea plan for Cascade View. So these communities are different. They're segmented by the I-5 corridor. Melody Hill is a mixture of light industrial and residential uses. Cascade View is a mixture of residential uses, commercial uses. It's also where the Mount Lake Terrace High School is located. And there's also a mobile home park in the neighborhood as well. So our existing comprehensive plan, the first comprehensive plan was executed as part of the 1990 passage of the Growth Management Act, so planning for the 1992 to 2012 cycle. As Christie mentioned, the last update to the comp plan was in 2015. Our environmental impact statement hasn't been updated since 1983, so there'll be a lot of work there to update it.
Don't tell anyone.
Yeah, go ahead.
How does that happen?
That's a good question. I think that there, there was a tendency to adopt existing environmental regulations. But I would say, since I had more recently graduated from high school during that time, I think it's time for an update. So we did do EIS work for the Terrace Station project in, in that area down there. And we did, of course, do an EIS for, for Town Center, but we have a great deal of the community that hasn't had an EIS. So yeah, we, we planned for that, and we will do, do that as part of our work. But yeah, it's, it's, it's definitely needs tuned up. I would not think it's helped us. It's probably saved us money, but I would say that we just probably haven't been called out on it. And we don't want to be in that position where somebody challenges the work that we're doing because we're, we're, we're not passing the sniff test. So I think there's, there's more eyes on our community now. There's definitely going to be more development, and it behooves us to make sure that all of our products, including our environmental review, are updated as well as our plans. It just benefits us as a community, so.
Okay. They want to briefly mention that there's other work that has happened aligning with comprehensive plan amendments. So, for example, the Recreation Parks and Open Space Master Plan was adopted in 2022. So we'll make sure to incorporate this in, in policies in the new comp plan update. Similarly, the Transportation Master Plan, which was adopted in 2020, Shoreline Master Program, 2019. And regarding transportation, of course, we need to update the transportation elements, so there'll be an in-depth level of analysis there to, to update that. But there's also going to be some additional work in the pipeline that's anticipated to update the Transportation Master Plan Improvement Program and the demand management. So that's forthcoming. Currently, this is not part of the comp plan update process, but it could very well be. So this is currently the comp plan elements that are in our comprehensive plan. Those with an asterisk are mandated by the Growth Management Act. Did have an edit here. A recreation element is actually not required, but we do have Recreation Parks and Open Space element.
Quick question. Is environment the same as climate change? Does that include that work, or is that different?
It could, yes, it includes that work as well.
It will now. Historically, it really hasn't, but there's requirements now to address climate change. Thank you.
Yeah. Yeah, so that's one of the things we're following at the state legislature level as far as these new requirements. So climate change is one of them. Also, there's talks about including, requiring an equity element. So that's something we're also following.
Did you have a question?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Yeah, just to add on, actually, there's, yeah, right, there's state legislation that has not yet passed.
Right.
But countywide, we are requiring it, I guess, I mean, expecting, let's just say, the county is expecting the cities within the county to adopt climate, climate policies and into the comp plan. And I'm sure equity and things like that are coming as well. So yeah, I think there are a lot of good things. And again, this is another opportunity in our comp plan, comp plan update process to address these important issues and, and take advantage of it.
Oh, question. Along these lines, I think, you know, something that I've heard about from community is related to canopy, you know, certainly climate, you know, climate zone change and sort of how, you know, outside of, of the tree canopy that, that exists on city property and city right-of-way. We just want to put down that marker for, for, you know, thought, because I know that we've got involved community members who are interested in how we can maintain the tree canopy we have and grow it. And also, you know, to the degree that the city wants to or has capacity to, to facilitate retention of, of that canopy. I think there's lots of public health, heat island effect, and other benefits that come from that. So not to go down too many rabbit holes, but just wanted to comment.
You'll be happy to know that there's work going on right now, staff-wise, for taking a look at that, both addressing in areas where we have to meet density requirements, so trees are going to have to come down, but how we can do fee in lieu of, and also have provisions to retain significant trees in other areas of the city. So I would anticipate you're going to see something come before you this year regarding that.
And then this is the overview of our draft scope of work, which we included in the RFP. Again, not exhaustive, but it's sort of a framework to go about the comp plan update process. So in addition to the work program and schedule, we'll want a project management plan from the consultant, a way to organize what to expect from the consultant, how to work with them, securing dates for meetings with the consultant, assuming weekly or bi-weekly meetings. There'll be a lot of work and coordination. Public participation plan again. And then here I have Planning Commission and City Council meetings. So there'll be a series of meetings with the Planning Commission and City Council to update you on our progress throughout each key milestone met. So I expect a lot of face time on this. And finally, hopefully, by December, final adoption and implementation. So this is a tentative timeline. It's a pretty aggressive timeline. It's a lot of work that's bunched together to meet the deadline of December 2024. So we're currently in winter 23. We just issued the RFP, and we hope to work fast to select a consultant and get into contracting with a consultant and kick off by April 24th. So that is the goal right now. Following that, early spring, we'll conduct, we'll begin the visioning process. There's a line item here for a community advisory committee. We do want to convene a community advisory committee made up, made up of stakeholders in the community as well as community members. So TBD on what that looks like, but that's something that we want to work with the consultant to build into the public participation plan and plan for that.
Sorry to interrupt again, Jonathan, if I may. Thank you, Mayor. I think, you know, having made my comments earlier about sort of diversity in, in many forms, economic, housing, ethnicity, race, and, and all the other ways we might consider that. That sounds like a great opportunity for us to, you know, find residents who can participate.
So regarding next steps, we'll be starting to review RFPs, submittals during the week of March 20th. So as mentioned previously, we hope to select a Planning Commission member who could serve on this committee to review the proposals. So during that week, they'll be included with, along with staff that we've identified for this review committee to review, to review, submittals, score, and be available for a debrief meeting on Friday, March 24th, to sort of select the finalists that we will interview. So interviews are currently going to be scheduled for April, the week of April 3rd. And we hope to select consultant by April 10 and kick off by April 24th. Before the kickoff, we will bring the information on the selected consultant to council on April 17th for review and approval. Don't know if you had a chance to look through the RFP, but as far as, I can actually stare my screen real quick. Did you have anything? So I won't go into each page, but I did want to highlight what, sort of the eligibility criteria that we're looking for, which I think is important. So minimum criteria, these are minimum requirements. Minimum five years, five years' experience working Washington State and knowledge of the state's Growth Management Act and State Environmental Policy Act, or SEPA. Minimum of five years working with the local jurisdictions on comp planning and implementation, and experience working with smaller jurisdictions or more of a mid-sized jurisdiction. Let's see. Now, these are the metrics that we'll be using to score the proposals. So expertise and qualifications, related experience on comp planning, related experience on SEPA environmental review, but their project approaches and proposed methodology, responsiveness and clarity of the submittal and related experience in community engagement. And and that's all I have today. Happy to answer any questions you may have.
Are there any questions, comments? Go ahead, Councilmember Murray.
Thank you, Mayor. And thank you, Jonathan and Christie, for the presentation and all of the work. And again, excited about that. I guess the one thing I would mention that when thinking about, when going through those RFPs and thinking about their project methodology, when we were down at the Association for Washington Cities here, whatever that was, the last couple of weeks, they had a good session around using equity frameworks as part of that work. And I'm happy to share that over, but I just, I think that would be a really interesting and key component to think about as we think about who we're, who we're working with and the approach that they'll take to this work. So just wanted to mention that. And then I think the only other piece was that engagement piece. I think the council's calendar has us like right here at the beginning and then at the very, very end. And I think we've already had that conversation that we would love to have, or at least I would love to have that, you know, be, be a more regular cadence to where we're, we're understanding where things are at.
Definitely.
Again, if there are things that we can do to be helpful that, that we're ensuring, that we're engaged in the process. So again, I just thank you and excited to, to, to start the work.
Thank you.
All right. Anyone else? Okay. Oh, did you have something?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. You mentioned that, and it brought me back to the, we have a comprehensive plan community vision statement in the old comprehensive plan, and we're going to, updating that. And I just wanted to remind us that we also adopted a different vision statement for, with our city goals. So we might want to take a look at kind of merging those. And I, I tried on the vision committee a little bit, but it didn't. We had other great grand visions that we wanted to adopt as a council, so we went down that path. And, and I think we have a great vision statement that we came up with. And because of that, I think it's worth maybe taking a look at that and incorporating that potentially in our, our comprehensive plan, because that is the vision that we, we want to achieve, see and achieve in our community. And along those lines, we have a whole lot of great goals we adopted as well that might be appropriate to incorporate into our, our comprehensive plan as well, particularly the community livability element.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Anyone else? Guess not. Thank you. We look forward to getting updates on this. Okay. Shall we just take a three-minute break then? All right. Three minutes. Yeah. It is now 9:50. We're back in session. All right, thank you. And so next on our agenda is a public comment. Do we have anyone in the public or in the virtual public?
No one has signed up in person. If there's anyone in the online audience who would like to speak, please use your hand raise tool. Going once, going twice. There's no public comment.
All right, thank you. So next is the review of the March 6, 2023 meeting agenda. Has everyone looked at that? Okay. So that's great. And then next is council comments. Does anyone have any council comments? Well, I thought I would bring up this letter in, excuse me, council comments, so that I can let the Mayor Naring and Mayor Wieda know tomorrow if we're going to be a part of it or not. Just, so this, did everyone get, excuse me, get this ahead of time? And do you, do you have any questions? Councilmember Payne Donovan, first and then.
Well, thank you, Madam Mayor. I guess, you know, for the, for the record, since I don't think this is in the materials tonight, this relates to a mayor's for, mayors and business leaders for public safety request to Snohomish County legislators for, in support of a regional training proposal for the Criminal Justice Training Center expansion, or citing one here in Snohomish County, from what I can tell. I guess I'm, being the newbie, I would benefit from some understanding of sort of mayors and business leaders for public safety, but also I think more to the point what the, what the proposal actually is. And it sounds like it may be a state capital budget ask.
We are one of five council mayor or council city manager. And so the, the strong mayors are just, if they want to, they can sign it. But Mill Creek, Bothell, and myself and, and Mount Lake Terrace, we can't, we can't sign it without the, the council saying. Go ahead, Councilmember Son.
For years, you know, we used to be here a lot about the police and we, we bring, I think her name was Sue, in from the, yeah, from the Justice Center. And she would always, I mean, it was, I, it was horrible. She's always begging for money everywhere, everywhere. And so how, and that's been well represented for years. And establishing a new one, how is it going to get paid for, for one? And is it exactly what we need? And, you know, always a good thing, something that looks really good sometimes doesn't, you know, get to where we need to go. So I don't, like you were saying, I don't have a lot of the background on this either. We've kind of been left out of the loop. And so I'll let Brian go, those are just some of my comments.
So I can, did you want to?
I just wanted to say that how's it going to get paid for? This specific, specific element will come, be funded. They're, they're asking to have it funded through the general fund budget, as a piece of the general fund budget at the state level. And so that's what they're hoping for is to encourage those budget writers to provide additional funding. And you're right, Sue Rohr has been, you know, was involved for decades.
But you're right, Sue Rohr has been, you know, was involved for decades in trying to get more funding for this. I remember one of our, several of our SEC dinners where she was involved and asked for funding. But anyway, I'm sorry.
So, I have mine on.
I was talking loud, I got hers.
So, what it, how this affects Mount Lake Terrace is that the Burian facility is so full that they're, they're just not going to be able to train enough police officers over there. And then they're going to open one, they're thinking about opening one in the Tri-Cities. Well, if we send, if Mount Lake Terrace sends somebody to Tri-Cities, we have to put them up for several months while they go through, because this training is several months long. And then, so if we had one closer, closer in, like Snohomish County or Skagit County, I understand that Edmunds College has room and, and so, and some of, one of the colleges has room. And then, it would save Snohomish County cities a lot of money so they don't have this go to either Burian or Tri-Cities. And that's, that's all I know on this one here.
So, Mayor, I don't know if it's possible to get a memo explaining this from the, just again, I'm a little bit new and in the dark here, but from this group, it seems like there, I'm just looking for some extra context, given that my curiosity has piqued, given my, you know, proclivity to legislative things. But I think it's also responsible for us to understand a little bit more of this context.
Do you want to answer that?
Yeah, I wanted to try and help. I guess, part of what I think the mayor was referring to earlier is that, you know, the other cities are, with strong mayors, make individual decisions on behalf of their city, whereas we are not in that position and therefore, they don't care. They're going to sign this letter with or without us. And we have to decide as a group whether we want to join them in advocating. I mean, they, of course, they'd like to have more cities sign on, but they're, they don't have to bring this before their council. And so, they're able to do this quickly and expedite the process. And they, they come out with this letter, these, and this isn't the first time, this has been happening, you know, often, where they, they send something to the mayor saying, here's, here's this, we're looking to submit it tomorrow. Do you want to sign on? And, you know, what is it, 15 out of 18 cities or whatever cities in Snohomish County sign right on and no problem, they don't have to worry about it.
There's 21 cities and five are council mayors.
Well, I know for a fact that, you know, we'll start seeing state budget drafts as early as next week, and I understand that timeline. I also, I've already said my piece in terms of like.
So, all I want to know is, do I sign it or do I not sign it? It's up to you guys.
How long?
Go ahead. Oh, Councilmember Murray's been waiting.
Yeah.
Okay.
Oh, yeah.
Go ahead.
What's the timeline?
Tomorrow.
Can I, thank you. Really like to talk at some point. Thank you. So, I mean, I guess, and similar, I reached out earlier to the mayor trying to get some, some clarity and some context, which seems to be, I think, a running theme candidly around some of this work. And I think we are generally supportive of the idea of public safety, which is why we decided to kind of trust the process a little bit, which is, I will say, I think to Councilmember Sonmore's point, I think oftentimes things sound really good and, you know, the devil's in the details, right? And so, I think, you know, I went to there, they had a session at AWC. I went trying to kind of understand more. I think I'm still trying to understand more. And so, I think when it comes to signing on to specific advocacy, and I know that this is a theme for me when it comes to our advocacy efforts, when it comes to legislative work. But again, I think the details really matter and I don't, I don't understand, I don't understand enough about this to feel like I can say, yes, we should be advocating for this. So, for me, if the deadline is tomorrow and they aren't able to provide more information, then I would, I would be inclined to not sign on to it.
Go ahead, Councilmember Ryan.
Well, I did see this in an email and then I saw this tonight, which is second time I've seen it. I'm all for public safety. I'm in for saving money. This is advocating for our county. We have four signatures now. I don't think there's a lot to really go in and go through this a lot, so I'd be supportive of this.
Councilmember Sonmore?
What has our chief said? Have we talked to our police officers about this?
Yeah, I, I have in passing, so, yeah. But I don't want to answer for him. Go ahead.
Yeah, thank you, Madam Mayor. And I, yeah, I mean, as you may recall, the chief was very supportive of this coalition and the efforts and the direction this is going. We haven't talked to the chief about this specific ask, but I would assume that the chief would be very supportive, because as has been pointed out, this is additional funding. We hear from the chief all the time about the struggle we have with training officers and how long it takes and finding slots, getting, you know, we might find a new recruit, but we can't fit, fit that person into a training slot. And why? Because there's a backlog. And so, this is trying to ask for, as we've heard from going back to years and years to Sue Rohr days, you know, there's, there is a continual need to provide funding for this program to train our officers. And so, I think that it is a good opportunity. I think I appreciate, more than you know, maybe, or as much as you know how much I appreciate, the being very cautious of what we're signing on to as a city and legislation. But I think this is, honestly, this is a no-brainer for us, from my perspective, because of the public safety and addressing a need that our officers have, our police have indicated for years and the state has indicated for years, the need to fund these type of programs.
The only follow-up I would have is, Burians had all these problems for years and years and Sue kept on coming to us year after year. And our former mayor was a police officer, so we heard about it over and over. If they're not getting enough funding, what makes us think that we'll get enough funding?
I don't know if this is funding as much as the need for having it in various parts of the, because John Lovick was working on this.
Yeah, it's not, it's not them versus us. This is a program that they're looking to expand and provide different locations to train officers, I think, right?
Yes.
It'd be funded out of the state general fund.
So, they're, they're supportive of that?
That's, it sounds like that's Senator Lovick's.
Isn't John Lovick the one that wrote the?
The funding is always comes from the state. I mean, that's a debate of.
Oh, it's not that. It's just, we've always just heard there's never been enough funding to train police officers. So, now all of a sudden, there's going to be.
It's different now because they're hiring police officers and they can't.
Find them. Yeah.
Population issue.
Go ahead, Councilmember Woodard.
Thank you, Mayor. It's been hard to jump in tonight. I feel like I'm on an island. Hello, I'm over here, God damn it. Excuse my language. That said, you know, I'm going to go with your terminology if this is seemingly a no-brainer, as long as we're not conflating being a part of the coalition versus how I read this. Granted, I didn't see the email. I'm reading this tonight for the first time, but I have been following this discussion so long as those two intersect. I would say there's a hidden, or at least an unspoken potential positive, which I have heard from our chief as well as from other officers, similarly to other segments of the population, that no one knows what Snohomish County is. And that's why you have the makeup that you have, mostly folks who are from Snohomish County are applying for Snohomish County positions. So, this, to me, seems like this would also be an opportunity to diversify our police force, because these other cities would also say, we're not sending you to the Tri-Cities. That's very expensive. We'll send you up the hill, be it Skagit, hopefully it be Snohomish County. More exposure, therefore, maybe I start to see myself as being a part of the community. Therefore, when all these quote-unquote job opportunities show up, Snohomish County is somewhere on that list. So, I would be okay with signing on to this as long again, as we're not in doing so, saying we are absolutely a part of the coalition. I still don't know where we fell on that, and I needed more information on that. But as far as advocating for Snohomish County and public safety, this seems like keep us in the game by signing on to it.
Go ahead, Councilmember.
Once, and one final thing, Mayor, I'm, you know, I think, I just about said Senator Woodard. It's the other, other job. Councilmember Woodard, I think, raises some, some solid points and I think, I have strong agreement there. So, I'm comfortable signing on to the letter. I just ask, since we, since I just learned that we are a part of this, this, this group that's forwarding the letter, I'd, I'd appreciate some, I don't know if there are materials or some better understanding of what, what the heck this thing is. And also, if they are staffed, you know, in the future, just some, some like cursory background on requests like this.
It would be from Mayor Naring and.
Okay. So, they don't have staff or lobbyists or anything? Okay.
Well, they hired a public affairs.
Okay.
To help advocate their interests.
Got it. All right. I'll.
You didn't have it on, you can't hear you.
I'll stop asking questions, but thank you.
All right. So, Stefan, do I ask you if we can just see if we have consensus? Do I just ask who is in favor? So, who would, who would be in favor of us, our city signing this? That's one, two, three, four, okay? Five. All right. We have consensus. We don't even have to go to the negative, to the, to the, to the nose. All right. So, I will let them know that we'll sign this, this tomorrow. Who do I tell that to? All right.
John.
All right. Thank you very much. And then, so, anything else for council comments?
I just have one.
Go ahead.
At an upcoming council meeting, can we recognize Mark Severian, who had recently passed away? Maybe we could have staff say a few words about Mark.
Yeah, maybe we can add that to Monday night. I took a picture of, of what you guys did, I hope. And, because it just, it was, it just hit me. And so, it's nice, nice to see that, you know, that he was recognized. And then, anyone else? Anything else for council comments? All right then, I'll adjourn the meeting. Thank you very much. Break. Stop.